Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular scheduled city council meeting of Wednesday, November 1st, 2023. Let the record show that all councils are present. Before we move on with this meeting, I just, on behalf of the City Hibbing, I'd like to take this time for a moment of silence and prayers for the Adam Johnson family. Someone who came through our schools, our athletic departments and school systems and has helped put Hibbing on the map. So if we could have just a moment of silence? Thank you. And please keep the Johnson family in your prayers and thoughts. We have called order, we have approval, we have adds and deletes. Let's see, delete, Department Committee Report Number 2A, add Department Committee Report Number 5B, add License Permits Number 6. Could I have approval of agenda? Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you. Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of Hibbing City Council Meeting, October 18th, 2023. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Or.
Or by Councilor Swyberger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carried. Approval of minutes of Hibbing City Council Workshop Meeting of October 18th, 2023. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. We'll move on to consent agenda. Approve accounts payable dated 10/13/2023, checks number 175836 through 175928 in an amount of $545,620.62. Two, approve the city payroll for pay period ending 10/8/2023, checks number 168829 through 168841 in the amount of $539,287.35. Number three, authorize the hire of Scott Danielson for automated truck driver with the sanitation department, effective November 2nd, 2023. Number four, authorize the posting of full-time skilled labor position with the Public Works Department. Number five, authorize the hire of Brian Eichholz for the full-time collection system operator, effective November 2nd, 2023. Six, authorize the full-time equipment one with the Public Works Department. Seven, approve the new email signature policy, effective November 2nd, 2023. Eight, authorize the hire of Jason Rozinski for the full-time firefighter paramedic pending pre-employment contingencies. Nine, authorize the hire of Sky Lenars for the temporary library intern pending pre-employment contingencies. Ten, authorize the hire of Shannon Jarvis for temporary indoor playground attendant at the library pending pre-employment contingencies. Eleven, approve the agreement between the City Hibbing and ESI Employee Assistance Group for EAP services in amount of $3,500. Twelve, authorize the Hibbing City Council attend the Hibbing Public Library Yuletide Event on Thursday, December 7th, 2023, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Thirteen, acknowledge the resignation of Helen Ostman, Temporary Library Specialist with the Hibbing Public Library, effective October 30th, 2023. Fourteen, authorize the posting of a full-time library technician at the Hibbing Public Library. Fifteen, set the next regular city council meeting for Wednesday, November 15th, 2023, in the City Hall Council Chambers. And sixteen, set the next city council workshop meeting for Wednesday, November 15th, 2023, following the regular meeting in the City Hall Council Chambers. Items previously approved, set the public hearing for the adoption of the final levy for Wednesday, December 6th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chamber. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Is there support?
Or.
Support by Councilor Whitney?
Nope.
Our councillor, I'm sorry. Councillor Hildebrand, and hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to department. We'll move to public forum first. And we have two for Citizens Forum, and I appreciate you coming tonight. Know that it's a five-minute limit and we can't make decisions, but we certainly do want to hear what you have to say. So at this time, we have two. We have Ann Og, if you might want to come up first? Yes. Please state your name and address before you speak. Thank you.
Ann Og, 3831 Lahala Road, Hibbing.
Okay, thank you so much.
And I'm here just recently, there has been ticketing of vehicles in regard to the calendar parking. And it's come as a surprise to many, many people in the city. And I think primarily from my point of view, I think it's very important to support local businesses and I think that ticketing hinders that. And an example is, people have been ticketed around Sunrise Bakery. So there's already limited parking there. And if, you know, there's Caribou Coffee a few miles down the road with parking lot. And I think if people are discouraged from patronizing these local businesses, they will. They'll just go to another business. And it's not just the Sunrise, it's several local businesses, and they already struggle to survive. So I think it's important to study the impact of this ticketing, you know, around the city. And whether it's churches and people, you know, not being able to... Somebody was really surprised the other day. They went into church for some event and came out, and they'd been parking there for 40 years, and there's a ticket. And they just feel guilty and like they've done something wrong. Some of the tickets are warnings and some are a charge of $20. That is my primary concern is business, though. And I also think it's really important to, for Hibbing to be known as a welcoming city. And I don't understand the whole picture of the calendar parking and ticketing, but I think that is really important to be kept in mind, you know, that we just need to be welcoming and not have people finally come to one of our businesses and then get a ticket. It's just a little bit of a slap in the face or... But that's about all I have to say for right now. Thank you.
Ann, I appreciate your comments. Thank you for coming forward. At this time, Suzanne, please. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Dustood Star, 406 North Inner Drive, Hibbing. So thank you for being our public servants, and thank you for listening to what we're bringing to the table today. So I got this ticket after living in Greenhaven for 34 years, never had a parking ticket. It was a nice sunny day and there was no reason, as far as I could tell, why I would have gotten this. I then ended up talking, I've probably talked to 50 different people. They've all either gotten tickets, warnings, or they've heard about something, someone getting that, and they're not happy about it. So I'm here to represent myself and a lot of your constituents who absolutely do not want to see calendar parking enforced year-round. Why? Because it seems like it is certainly not needed. Whatever benefit, and you had some reason for starting to actually ticket people when there's not snow on the ground, which is generally when the ticketing has happened. Whatever benefit you're getting, I'm telling you, the cost in terms of tax-paying homeowners that want to just be able to park a car in front of their house, or they've got guests over and they're parked in front of their house and they're getting tickets, that cost is huge in terms of frustration, inconvenience, and just a burden. In the summer, if we're bringing our tent camper, we're gonna take it out on a trip and one day I'm spraying it down to wash it, and we have to load that thing and drive it and park it on Hatches, in front of Hatches House, to paint the rims or something? It's summer. And I've talked to numbers of you, and you've said, "Well, we got the street sweeping to take care of." Well, that is a handful of days out of 365. And what you could do is you could just take the ordinance and strategically employ it when you need it. Like, put an ad in the paper and put something on social media, like they do in Minneapolis. They just say, "Hey, it's fall leaf season. For the next two weeks, we're going to enforce calendar parking. Thank you." Then nobody would be offended. Everyone I've talked to has said, "If the snow is falling and you need to plow, everyone is going to support calendar parking." But when that is not the case, and I've also heard someone said, "Well, if we don't do it year-round, people get out of the habit." Well, that is not a good reason to create this burden for us to have to swap the sides of the street year-round or we're potentially breaking the law. That is not a good reason. And here's how you could do it. So October 1st, you've got some new parking patrol people. Have them send out a notice, a friendly reminder, not one of these scary-looking tickets. A friendly reminder, "This is your Hibbing Police Department. We would like to help you keep money in your pocket all winter long, just letting you know. As soon as the snow flies and the plows need to be out, we need you to not be parked here or it's gonna cost you." And then just reiterate what the parking rules are. And you would get everybody's attention. Everybody would remember, you've got two new people, they could work the whole month of October. Canvas the town. And if you've got some areas of town where there, I've heard there are a couple fourplexes with all these extra vehicles because they're apartments, that might be a unique setting that you as a group would have the ability and the authority to create some kind of a unique calendar parking situation, to resolve that situation. And there might be other places in town that I'm not aware of. But to take that specific thing and to create this burden for the rest of us, we don't really want the neighbor's sailboat. It's huge, parked in front of our house, nor the huge rig that, you know, somebody comes for a week. They have kids in Arizona and they drive up and they just settle down and nobody minds it because it's in front of their house. But to have to move that every day to not be breaking the law, I agree with Ann. It creates kind of an icy feeling in town, and we love living here. And we just don't want to be bothered. We don't really need like the long arm coming in, and that's kind of what it feels like. It feels like it's unnecessary, and there are creative ways you can get the same results. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, Mark? Yes, you are. Yes, Mark? Yeah, I was gonna get to that.
I just wanted to make sure.
No? You were both on there. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. And I just wanted to add a few things to what my wife said. Mark Star, 406 Northern Drive, Hibbing. And we've lived in Greenhaven for 34 years. And I think we did get a ticket once, about 32 years ago, for calendar parking. And I can't, we might have paid it, it was $2 back then. But, and then we lived over by the high school and they counterparking over there. And I can see it a little bit more maybe by the high school where there's more congestion. But at least in Greenhaven, the streets are so wide, there really is any need for it. If you needed snow plowing, in like Minneapolis, they declare snow emergencies. They declare a snow emergency and then they have the rotation, just like here. If you're on the odd side of the street, then you, odd days, you park on the odd side, even days, you pick on the even days, and then they can do the snow plowing. And you could do the same thing for removing leaves or other matter. But I think if you do keep the calendar parking, I think the whole thing should get revamped. But if you do, some of these streets that are major thoroughfares, like a member of our church at the Methodist Church, 94-year-old lady got a ticket for parking on 23rd Street in the middle of the day because she went to a meeting at the church or some ladies' event. And she's parked there for probably, I don't know, 40 years and never got a ticket before. So these major thoroughfares, like 21st and 23rd and 37th, those streets should for sure be exempt from calendar parking. I know Howard Street is, and I looked at the city code, Howard Street and First Avenue, and some of the side streets near Howard Street where they've got businesses, some of those, at least for a block or two, are exempt. So customers can park there and not get ticketed. It's not that way at Sunrise Bakery. Like 3rd Avenue, 7th Avenue, you've got churches, you know, Memorial Building on 23rd. Those streets should be exempt automatically if you're gonna have the calendar parking because technically, like on Sundays, a lot of people are violating the law, going to church or going to hockey games during the week or whatever. So I just hope that it's really looked at and maybe a better way it can be set up. And I just had one other thing that I popped into my head as I was thinking about tonight is, now that marijuana is legal, and you've probably talked about this, I don't know. But I hope the council is working on ordinance as far as use of marijuana in town. Unfortunately, the state legislature didn't do hardly anything and left it up to all the cities to do something. But like just today, when I was walking down Howard Street, I could smell pot on the street. So I don't think, I don't think people are allowed to drink alcohol on the public sidewalks. I don't think they should be allowed to smoke marijuana. And I shouldn't allow marijuana in our city parks. I don't think there's any law right now prohibiting that. You know, unfortunately, I don't know if you can prohibit people from smoking in their backyards. But that's gonna be, that's a terrible thing because as you know, pot spreads a lot, quite a ways. And the smell to me is not very pleasant. But in any event, I hope you can try to restrict it in a way that's, you know, in the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Mark, thank you for your comments, Susan. And Ann, thank you for coming for us tonight. As you know, we can't make any decisions tonight to discuss it, but I think your subjects were outstanding. And I know parking is on our working session tonight. Okay, we will move on to department then. Committee reports. Mr. Green.
Hearing council, the first subject is to approve an interim use permit request of Tom and Jennifer Nemenech for a gravel pit out on Stuko, off of Stuko Road where there has been gravel pits for, before I've been here. So this would be north of the existing gravel pit. The original hearing was for two 40-acre parcels. One of the 40s is located next to the Kitzfeld garbage dump, and there was a concern about that. And the MPCA does have monitoring. Well's out there, but it's not an investigation now. Since 1980, I think, it's been monitored. Mr. Nemenech agreed with, on the second hearing, I came up with, put the 40-acre buffer between the garbage pit and where he actually will be starting the first gravel pit. And that would, in the future, they could come back on that second 40 because it was rezoned to allow for a gravel pit. So it met all the conditions. That was an agreement. They will follow all MPCA rules for gravel pits, dust control signage on the pits, and hours of operation, which are listed, resolution. So the Planning Commission did send forward to recommended approval on this gravel pit.
Very good, Pat. Hearing what Mr. Green had to say regarding the pit, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman?
Or.
Support by Councilor Swyberger? Any discussion?
Mayor? Yes, just a couple of questions for Pat. Is this, this is pretty close to where that other gravel pit is out there, right?
Pretty close to where?
To the other gravel pit that was out there?
Yes, it's just north of that.
Okay. Did anybody, sorry, go ahead.
Yuland Brothers owns the old Hagsted gravel pit. And Tom Nemenech owns, I think it's a 10-acre parcel north of Yuland's that is part of that gravel pit. That's a conditional use from way back. So this will just be north of where Tom is now, in a 40-acre parcel.
Okay. Did any of the residents out there go to the planning and zoning meeting by chance?
Yes. Most of their concern was about hours of operation, truck drivers following the speed limit, and now there's a four-wheel drive or four-wheeler trail out there. So they thought there'd be more people besides semis. But the owner agreed to all those conditions, has to keep tabs on the drivers. If there are complaints, will come to my office, which they haven't, you know, not on that one, but on a couple others that we take care of. And they have to follow these conditions or they'll bring it to the council. And if they don't, then they could lose their permit.
Perfect. Has the other one been upholding their hours of use, like we talked about last year? Their working hours, has that gotten better?
The other?
The other pit, when they, I know there was contractors out there before 7 o'clock last year. We both got calls about it. I'm just making sure that they're gonna follow those rules from now on. So, okay.
Yes, I'll say.
Thank you. Pat, did it pass unanimously, all planning and zoning, if I remember?
Can't remember, we had two here.
Oh, okay.
No, it's on a resolution.
Okay, let me look. I'll look too.
It did.
It did. All four. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify, for Councilor Hoffman-Sockman and Councilor Swyberger, are you accepting the findings and the conditions that's set forth in the resolution the Planning Commission passed? I think this might be appropriate to have this recorded, let's reflect that there is. But I, as part of your motion then, Councilor Hoffman-Sockman, would you adopt the recommendations as well as the findings made by the Planning Commission?
Yes, I would. I would like to do exactly what Andy said.
So an amendment to her motion?
Yes, amendment.
Yes, just to accept the proposed findings and conditions that's set forth in the interim use. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you, Pat. Number B.
Next subject is for a conditional use for a billboard message, a changeable sign, which requires a conditional use. This will be located out at Markmanship Road on the north side of the double lane. So as far as the billboard and the conditional use, Joshua Jenkins Flying Aces Billboard met all the conditions. One of the requirements was to get us information. You do have some letters, I think they're in your packet, from the neighborhood across the highway to the south. And so they did send me on lumens and where they actually go out as at an angle. So the sign is actually in a V. I don't know if any of you have seen these newer signs. There is one right by Mountain Iron, South Grove. And it's been there for about a year and a half. And they're not like the old, let's say, plasma screen sign. They do automatically change with daylight, sort of like your car would for your interior. So at nighttime, it actually gets dimmer because you can see it from further away. And that's what all this information showed me. The closest house is over 500 feet to the south. So this, and also, he owns the property. It's Zone I-1, which is allowed for billboard signage. And it's to the furthest west of the property. Markmanship Road is to the furthest east of the property. Closest house, closest property, no house, 450 feet. The closest two houses are 970 feet to 980 feet. Joshua testified that, you know, it should have very little illumination towards those buildings. At 70-degree angle, which would be the angle facing them, would be .01 lumens per square foot. So the Planning Commission did recommend approval with the conditions that we have and finding some fact.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Green had to say regarding the conditional use permit, wishes of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Swyberger. Or?
Support.
Or by Councilor Fossil? Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead, no, please.
I attended these, the Planning and Zoning Commission where we heard everything. This is in my area. I heard from the residents out there. And while I support Mr. Jenkins wanting to bring something to our community, these residences, residents are opposed to it. And I wish it could be in a bit of a different spot where there are no houses because I appreciate all the finding of fact, all the studies, all the information Pat gave. And to me, unfortunately, like the only way I'm gonna know is when the sign is up, how it affects it. It could be nothing. It could bother them. So for that reason, I will be voting no on this.
Okay, councillor?
Mr. Mayor, Pat, how does this compare to the one in front of the Memorial Building? Is it as bright as that? Because I know that there was a special...
Which one is that, John?
In front of the Memorial Building, you know, our electronic sign way back when I know that it had to get a prior approval or whatever.
Correct.
Because there are residents along that street.
You know, this is 10 feet by 36 foot. That one is probably 4 foot by 10 maybe. And the smaller the sign, the brighter it appears. But they all are, can be dimmed, you know, with the computer. That one does, I don't think, has an automatic adjustment. So the one by Radco, that little one, it's new and right before the bridge. And that one, we've had them turn it down three times. And it's mostly the white background at just at night. It's, you know, real bright. And they have adjusted it, and I haven't received any complaints. They had to do it three times, but that is one of the conditions. If we get complaints, especially for driving and distraction, you know, there are no homes right there. But the only one I can compare this to is the one by South Grove. At night, I'm driving to Virginia, I notice it, but I don't, it's not distracting. Joshua is here, he could probably explain it a little better as far as the lumens and the angle. I'm not an expert on sign or electronic signs, but we try to get as much information as we can.
So in answer to another question, Pat, if, are there any type of, besides being able to adjust electronically, how bright it is, are there any type of shield panels or anything that can be put on if there is an issue also? Maybe the adjustment. Because I gotta believe you want it bright enough so you can, it's effective. I mean, there's gotta be a fine line, how bright it has to be to be effective.
For the closer you get with your car, yes. You don't have to see it. Joshua would be able to answer that better, Mayor?
Joshua, would you mind coming up?
He may have more, a little more info.
Similar, Pat, I'm not an expert on lumens and all that either. But what I talked to at my contact at Watch Fire, everything can be controlled on the spot. We'll have full control of it. The V is set to be directed at the cars. These houses are located almost directly south. And I don't know what information you guys have, if you got the map that I was sent by Dan. The visibility of that past 500 feet is, there's almost nothing you're gonna see.
.01, a study at that angle. Would be pointing towards... To the south. Sixty and seventy.
Right, so the white part of the V would be facing north and the V would go out something like this facing.
Correct.
Uh, west or west and facing east, correct?
And all the.
Cause it's on the north side of the highway.
Correct.
The point will be.
Yeah.
See the closest.
And if we're comparing, if you're looking for lighting, the light that's going to be seen across the highway is going to be less than a street light. So if you got a yard light up on a pole, that's going to be brighter than the sign if you're across the highway. And you're, you're not looking to have this sign visible at a mile, you know, you're not going to be able to read it. So you're pretty much on that hill before you're going to be able to see it and that brightness is attached to that. Not trying to reach people in town. If that makes sense.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I.
Yes.
I, I, my, I guess my concerns with it, I'm kind of on the fence about it. I don't mind the sign at all, but the placement of it is a little bit iffy. Um, we have Kelly Lake traffic right there, do we not? Is it quite a distance? So there's not a lot of risk of crossing traffic on that highway at that point? Okay. Okay, yeah. Okay. That was my one concern. The other one is, is when you do have that V shape, I understand though, you know, point zero one lumens. But that's at the seventy degree angle as you come up the highway towards like Kowalski's and, and, and the best property. There is going to be a little more facing light exposure, correct?
Right.
To the ones that are a little bit down there, I mean, a thousand feet away is, is, is down the highway a little bit. So they're going to get a little more exposure than.
And all sides of the highway are, you go way down. That's why also on the sign was a variance application because we're the, we have a height limit of thirty five feet. And, but it's almost thirty two feet to grade on the, on, uh, this land. So the actual height of that sign will still meet our, our ordinance from the grade of the highway, thirty five feet. So if, Markmanship Road has very low traffic as far as trying to cross anything. The only thing down there is, uh, the rifle range, I think. Don't even think there's any homes down there for sure. And then across the highway to the south, if you look at the grade, you're going down.
So help me understand something here. If you're going to put a sign up for visibility, then why would you pick that location in the first place then? If you're not going to be able to see it, is that kind of like what I'm hearing here?
No, the variance allows it to be up high enough to see it.
It's going to be okay.
Yeah.
It's the grade that goes up, okay.
And. The rest of the, that is zoned light industrial, that, that spot. You know, down, down the road where you have the oil company and that. So light industrial is where you can apply for a conditional use for a billboard also. You can't in, uh, the agricultural or suburban residential, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
One question.
Also fossil.
So if, if, if the sign is put up and the residents in that area complain, it comes to you. And we can then take action to try to reduce the lumens, I, I guess. And we can continue to do that, but if the residents keep complaining, I mean, the sign is already off. So is there a point where we have to tell them the sign has to be turned off?
Well, it has to be legitimate complaint. So it has to be proven, so we have to investigate and maybe get a sign, somebody more expert on those items. Now, if you look at First Avenue, Lucky Seven, houses across, you know, the street. And those gas stations are lit pretty much all night. The strobe light that's around the canopy, we've had to have that turned down. But those are very bright and we have residential right across the street. We really don't have any ordinance on, on those, you know, lumens and that. We, they did turn them down and we hadn't had a complaint and it was mostly the canopy. Where the lights under the canopy are down, but the strobe, it doesn't move, but it looks like a neon light.
Pat, a question for you, you know, unlike you just mentioned Lucky Seven, which is a set sign, doesn't change. I mean, the brightness of this sign, you, you're going to be ro- rolling through different types of advertisements, is that right?
Correct. Six seconds.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that every type of sign could have a different type of lumens as far as. But it's not going to be just a bright lumens set like, say you have it Lucky Seven, which is pretty bright. Cause I live by it. And, and, uh, you know, this could go up and down a little bit, but the highest it would go on the brightest. Add would be the set lumens that you set, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So then, um, as it is right now, this does meet everything in our ordinances then? They would be in compliance with the, our current ordinances, correct?
This billboard?
Right, this billboard, correct, okay.
Okay, uh, any other discussion?
Mayor, I have the same questions as I did on the, the past one for Council Schweitzer. The, uh, resolution that the, uh, planning commission passed adds some specific findings as well as conditions in the grant. Would you like to adopt those for the council in your motion?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. We move on to Finance Director Treasurer Sheena Muller. Approve the contract, uh, regarding with Baker Tilly.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Um, our five year arbitrage calculations are coming due next month on our twenty eighteen A bonds. Baker Tilly would complete yield calculations on our tax exempt bonds and debt service funds and ensure that we are in compliance with the IRS yield requirements. The amount of the engagement, um, letter is thirty one hundred dollars. Um, I'm asking for council to approve the agreement.
Okay. Hearing what, uh, Treasurer Sheena Muller had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve?
Most approved by Council Fossil.
Support.
Port by Council Hoffman Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you, Sheena.
Thank you.
Move on to City Service Director, Mr. Rolla.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight I have before you a professional service agreement with the University of Minnesota Extension Center. To, uh, update our local option sales tax study. As you remember, we did this, uh, last, or two years ago, we did it. And our, um, data was through twenty nineteen. This one will just bring everything up to speed with the latest data, which they have out through twenty, twenty twenty one. So, um, the state is always a couple of years behind on their data, but just looking to get this, uh, study updated going into our. Twenty twenty four lost, uh, referendum that we'll have next November and have the, the latest and greatest study. So, uh, it would be three thousand dollars and they will start working on it here this fall.
Very good, hearing what, hearing what Mr. Rolla had to say. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved, motion by Council Bayless.
Support.
Support by Council Schweitzer. Uh, basically what you said, our, our local option sales tax would go up in November of next year, uh, which we're. Putting before the residents to help support our new safety center. That's what this study will update, correct?
Yep, correct. It'll, uh, give us a better idea of, of what a, a, a half cent or half percent sales tax would bring in for the community. Based on the data up to twenty twenty one.
Very good, any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you, Nick. We move on to, uh, Deputy Administrator Candy Sepla.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I come before you tonight, um, bringing back the agreement that we discussed at the October fourth city council meeting. It's regarding the voting operations technology and election resources account. Again, you passed that, um, on October fourth. Um, as you'll remember, the city was going to allow Saint Louis County to retain the funds that were allocated. To the city of Hibbing as in other, um, cities within the county. We just had a larger amount and we felt at that time that that money could be best served with the equipment that they were going to purchase. Well, since then, we've been given more information that the funds will increase over the years. And so I was contacted by, um, Phil Chapman with Saint Louis County. And he suggested because they're going to be going up and because they don't handle our elections at all. It would, um, benefit us to, um, retain the funds. And so I just need to, um, have a motion, um, just asking for a motion to retain and receive our allocation. In the amount of one thousand four hundred sixty seven dollars and forty eight cents.
Okay, hearing what City Clerk Deputy Administrator Candy Sepla said, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Council Hoffman Sockman.
Support.
Port by Council Fossil. Any other discussion?
I have a question. So the process then, if we already approved something, do we have to go back and change that in any manner? Or does this trump that?
This would take care of that, Council Hoffman Sockman.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I know that we've discussed, um, what our IT needs could be or are, um, at past workshop meetings. Um, and employees have been discussing outside of the workshops, um, what will benefit the city of Hibbing. In an effort to qua- uh, quantify our need, IT needs and compare them to what we have. We've decided to solicit a company to look into our documentation processes for our network. Um, network discovery is a crucial first step when mapping and monitoring, um, what our infrastructure really is. So it would be, um, you know, we have hosted servers in Duluth. We have multiple, um, buildings within the city and we need to figure out everything that we need. Sheena and Josie and I met with Jeff Mikola of Mikola Computer Consulting about a month ago. And he created a proposal of the needs we requested. I'm bringing this before you today to approve this proposal at an amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. The amount is derived from a maximum of forty eight total hours times his hourly rate of a hundred and twenty dollars. The initial eight hours are set up, um, to set up and begin the comprehensive asset discovery assessment. Process using a special network sensor that he rents. Then the time will be in blocks of twenty hours and I'm asking for a maximum of forty eight hours. Because we have the eight initial hours and then we have blocks of twenty. And I just don't want to have to request again if, you know, if it goes to, um, anything over the twenty eight. But I think that this is really beneficial, um, because the city, we need to know exactly what we have.
Hearing the discussion and what was said, wishes of the council.
Motion approve.
Most approved by Council Schweitzer.
Support.
Port by Council Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you, Candy.
Thanks.
We move on to, uh, Administrator's report, Mr. Prisinski.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. Um, couple items from my office this evening. Um, item number one. Uh, Rainy Road Bridge project that was actually kind of wrapped up today.
Oh, nice.
Um, I think they put the batumis down and it'll be open tomorrow for business. I'm sure there are some punch list items, but the most important thing is that our residents can use that, um, that bridge. Uh, Minnesota and Eighth, kind of the same. Um, I think they put the batumis down yesterday. Uh, likely they're working on, on some of the restoration and punch list items. Um, so, uh, thank you for your patience on those projects. And then the last item from my office, we are going to be working on our annual report. Uh, twenty twenty three annual report. Will deliver that to the city council and our residents on, um, December twentieth. So we are going to engage with, um, some of the other stakeholders and include them in that annual report, so. More of an FYI, but I wanted to get that under readers, so with that I will yield.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, we'll move on to at this point bids and quotes, starting with, uh, City Engineer, Mr. Story.
Uh, Mayor Council, first one up here is for a new John Deere fifty one oh five tractor ditch mower. This will replace our two thousand five Challenger, uh, boom mower. Uh, we haven't used it, uh, in two years. We can't get parts for it. Uh, this is for mowing all of our rural roads. We have a little over two hundred and fifty lane miles of roads. Uh, if you notice this summer, we couldn't get to it all because we only had one mower. So what we did was we pulled the track skid steer from the cemetery budget for twenty twenty four and we replaced it with this piece of equipment. Um, if we want to get it ordered now, um, so we can receive it by about June of twenty twenty four. The piece of equipment is coming from RDO Equipment in the amount of seventy four thousand five hundred twenty nine dollars and thirty four cents. The attachment will come from Diamond Mowers in the amount of thirty three thousand, three hundred and sixty nine dollars and zero cents. And I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, hearing what Mr. Story had to say. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve?
Most approved by Council Fossil.
Support.
Port by Council Hoffman Sockman. Jesse, question for you, uh, what is our old mower, are you going to put that in our?
The, the.
Be traded in or in our auction, what are we looking at?
The, the old Challenger, the boom, we can't get parts that have the boom to use the mower, but the tractor is still fairly good condition. Um, so we will auction this off when we do an auction next summer.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion?
One question.
Yes.
Jesse, I know, I know you said the, the skid steer for the cemetery was going to get the axe in place of this.
Yes.
I know that was on there, well, they came to me and it was on their wish list, do, do they still have access to use one or?
Yeah, Council, we have, Public Works has a skid steer that they can use and, uh, City Services also has one that they can use. So when they, when they need it, uh, they make requests to the superintendent and then we bring it out there and they can use it.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Prisinski, are we looking at costly adding that then to next year's twenty four or twenty five budget? For the cemetery?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, short version, yes. There's some conversation about if we could cover it under the twenty three budget, so we do want to get that tool for that group. Um, they've been without a skid steer for quite a while. It's in discussion, how's that?
Okay, very good. And I know how important the ruins are, Jesse, from a safety point of view and, and, you know, if you have to weigh the two, I, I understand why you made the decision you did. It's all about public safety, so. Thank you, uh. Hearing no other discussion? Wishes of, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries, B.
Uh, Mayor Council, um, we went on for greater lease agreements. We got greater lease agreements from John Deere and from Caterpillar. Uh, Caterpillar was, was far less of a cost. It's four thousand one hundred sixty six dollars and thirty eight cents per greater. So our current lease on the six we are leasing now is up, um, in April. So those graders will go back. We originally discussed purchasing all six of those graders. Um, after many discussions, our plan is to purchase one of those graders. We have nine plow routes, so we purchased one of those graders, leased seven graders for five years. That way, the seven graders we lease will be covered with the warranty for the entire lease agreement. And if we buy the six, those will be out of warranty. So any costs associated with those graders will come out of the city, city funds. Um, we currently own four graders. Two of those graders are very rough shape. Will be really lucky if they do make it through the winter. So come next November, when this lease will be, will begin, we'll have seven graders that we'll lease. We'll own one of the John Deeres, so that'll be eight. And then we'll get rid of two of our older graders. So then we'll use one of our better graders of the two and then we'll have a spare. So that will have ten pieces of equipment. So then, if you remember, we ordered a plow truck here a while back. So we'll use that, once we get that in twenty twenty five, we'll use that on our rural routes. And then that'll take the place of our oldest grader that we own. And then for the twenty five budget, we'll budget for another rural plow truck, because we have two rural routes.
Right.
So, and then, then we'd like to, once this, once this lease agreement is up, which is five years. We'd like to look at purchasing one of those graders and just kind of keep the cycle rolling where this is very, very important equipment. We want it to be under warranty at all times.
Jesse, your oldest graders, what, eighty fives?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, I know, they're old.
They're rough, yep. So I'm asking for council for approval, approval to, um, approve the lease agreement with Caterpillar for five years. Uh, for four thousand one hundred and sixty six dollars and thirty eight cents per grader per month, beginning November of twenty four.
All right.
And we'll have all of these, all of these new numbers, uh, will be reflected in the twenty twenty four budget.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion approve.
Most approved by Council Whitney.
Support.
Support by Council Bayless. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. So, um, for the warranty work, do we have to go back to the manufacturer or are we authorized to do all the warranty work? With our own mechanics?
Uh, they will, they will do the warranty work, um, for us either. Either, it depends on what the service is. These'll, these'll be right over by Buell over there.
Oh.
So it depends on what it is. If they can come in-house and fix it, they'll do that. If not, that piece of equipment will have to go to their shop.
Right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. See you, Jesse.
Uh, next one is to approve the pump repair parts. This is for Dave Hurd of Treatment Plant. He did use these parts, so this is just a replacement, so we have parts on the shelf for this pump. From Liberty Process Equipment, the total amount is seven thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars, plus, plus shipping, so I'm asking for council approval for this.
All right, hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Swiber.
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Any discussion? I, I do like being proactive, that way, Jesse, and being ready. We know how important wastewater is to our city, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, C.
Uh, mayor, council, dump truck number sixty-three, if you recall, we put a new engine in this truck a while back. And once we got that in, we know, we found out that the box was bad, so we ordered a box, council approved that at the July nineteenth meeting with our new fleet manager, and Joe McKinney's here. They took the box off, so they're looking at the subframe and the hoist, and that is shot. It's, it's beyond disrepair. We cannot connect that to, to the truck, to the new box. So we took a look at it, and the, the total price for the hoist and the subframe is nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. We already ordered the box, so we, we do need this piece of equipment. This truck is part of our fleet, it's very important with winter coming up. So we're asking for council approval to approve this purchase, the cry steel. I think they already have the box, and this will be shortly behind it, and we can bring the truck down there, might even be down there, and have them install it.
Okay. So this includes installation?
Yes.
All right. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Whitney.
Support.
Support by councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, E.
Uh, mayor, council, this is for our two thousand seven Case Dozer. Last year, we bought some, we bought some parts for this dozer, for the tracks, for the running gear. We did have tracks, new tracks in the budget for 2024. After our fleet manager got to look at, look at the Case Dozer, it needs a lot more work than what we thought. So there, we do have a price from Titan Machinery for thirty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. This is for the whole running gear, everything, so we can use this. We use this at our snow dumps all winter. We use it for any grading in the summer. It is an important piece of equipment, and we looked at the hours on this one versus paying well over three hundred thousand dollars for a new one or lease options, and this is the best bang for the buck. I think we can, we can get this fixed, use it for a couple of years, and then we can trade it in. It will still have some value. So I'm asking for council to approve the thirty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-one cents from Titan Machinery.
Very good. Mr. Story's looking for support for parts for the Case Dozer. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless. Support?
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Yes, Mr. Story?
Mayor, council, I'm looking at our snow plow operations, working with our new fleet manager, our superintendent and foreman, Public Works. So we're looking at buying a new snow pusher for one of our loaders. If you look, go into the Walmart parking lot, Super One, you see them on the loaders. Currently for our parking lots, the Memorial Building parking lot is one of our bigger ones. It takes us a long time to plow the snow. We're using graders in there, we're using our snow blower in there. So we're looking at purchasing one of these, one of these blades. We'll be able to do it in a much less time, and then we can use this at all of our parking lots, and we're going to try using it in our alleys as well. It extends from ten feet to sixteen feet. It has a power angle, so we'd like to try this, and we're thinking that it's going to work out really well, and then we, we'll get another one next year for one of our other loaders. So I'm asking for council approval to, to approve this purchase from McCoy Equipment in the amount of twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say regarding the snow pusher, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion?
What?
It was a combination. You both went same time.
You can have it.
All right. Second by councillor Fossil. Discussion, Jesse, the, you said adjustable for the width of our, our alleyways. I, I agree, snow pusher, I think, is the way to go. What I hear you saying then is we're worried, we're going to, we're going to stockpile snow for a while instead of removing it all and then do it once we're cut up on the streets. Is that correct, to save that time for the safety of the streets?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council, what we'll do is we'll stockpile it on the east side of the parking lot in the middle, so it's not at an intersection. And then once, once we get the streets cleaned up, then we'll come back and we'll load it out.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Last, G.
Uh, mayor, council, attached is a quote for a two, twenty-twenty-five International Heel Rapid Rail garbage truck. This will be replacing our twenty-twenty-four pack mower garbage truck. We'll try to make the operations more efficient by using this style truck. This will be a twenty-twenty-five budgeted item, but with procurement, it takes roughly two years to get a piece of equipment right now. So attached are two, there are two quotes, one from Midstate in the amount of one forty-four eight seventy twenty-three for the chassis, and one from McQueen Equipment for the Heel Rapid Rail body for one eighty-three four thirty thirty-one. This is a price from Sourcewell Contract with a total cost of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand three hundred dollars and fifty-four cents plus the license fees. Like I said, this is, this is a needed equipment. We're gonna, we're gonna get this truck so it'll pick up bigger cans. We're looking at kind of revamping our sanitation department with the, what kind of cans we use. That'll be able to cut down on the type of trucks we have. So this, this will pick up the residential cans, and if need be, it'll pick up a three hundred gallon black round can.
Right.
So we're kind of looking at that, but we do need this truck. This will replace a twenty-fourteen. I'm, I'm asking for council approval.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Swiber.
Support.
Support by councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? This is the same truck we discussed in, in our working session. We want to deal with this financially in our budget, correct, Sheena?
Yes, that's correct.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Yeah, really.
All right, library manager, Laura Coningman.
Hey, mayor and members of the council, I come before you this evening to request approval for the purchase of a ScanPro thirty-five hundred all-in-one fish scanner in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-two cents plus the annual membership fee of two twenty fifteen from eImage Data.
Okay, hearing, hearing what library manager Laura Coningman had to say, questions? Wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Laura, is there, is this a new piece of equipment or replacing an existing?
Good question. So this is actually replacing a non-functional piece of equipment, but what's great about this is it's a comparable cost to a piece of equipment that does much less. This will allow us to digitize our microfilm collection, which has been a goal of the library for quite a few years. It'll be a longer ongoing project, but this will allow us to do that, and then we'll have searchable microfilm on site for keyword searching.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. My next item on the agenda is requesting approval for the purchase of a garage door from Overhead Door Company in the amount of six thousand and twenty-seven dollars. This includes the insulated garage door, new rails, the opener, insulation, and flashing.
Okay. Hearing what Laura had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much.
We move on to, again, city service director, Mr. Rowan.
Thank you, mayor. First one I have here is to approve a quote from Masava Glass for a new entrance door here on City Hall. As you've probably seen, the double doors at the front of City Hall has about a half-inch gap in it, and are very old and outdated. Weather stripping's completely gone, and we're looking at taking out the double door and going with a one, single door, wider door in the front. And then the second set of doors that are inside would be taken out to eliminate that, you know, if there ever was an emergency in here, eliminate kind of that choke point bottleneck, and just have one, one exit door going out, and obviously keep the, the elements outside and not coming inside. So looking for your approval on a new front door for sixty-eight eighty-five, and that will come out of our City Hall capital budget, so.
Hearing what's the role I had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless. Support?
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Nick, are they going to have two side lights then?
Yep.
Alongside the bigger window, if that's what we're?
Correct, yeah, be kind of centered in, with side lights on the side, yeah.
Yes, councillor.
Mr. Mayor, since the City Hall is on the national register, are these in compliance with, with that?
Yes, correct. They are, yep.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, B.
Uh, B is to approve a contract with Barr Engineering to begin design work on the Raceway Grandstand. If you remember, last spring, we had issues with the, the north half of the North Grandstand at the Raceway, concerned with safety. We have some beams and some support lumber underneath that is weathered and was showing its age. And so we brought in John Maxwell, structural engineer from Barr, take a look at it last spring, and he recommended immediate, immediate closure of that half of the grandstand. So we did, we closed it for the entire year. And now I'm looking to just get a, a design that we can now take to a contractor for repairs yet this, this coming spring to hopefully get it back open for the race season next year. I want you to know for sure, this will not solve the issue that we're having. The issue is with the footings underneath. We, we do not have frost footings underneath, the, underneath the grandstand, it is all on like very large patio blocks, basically, big ones. So this, this will get it open and usable, but it does not solve the problem. So we'll have to keep addressing it or looking at it, inspecting it annually to see where the shifting is annually. We chose not to go with redoing the frost footings on, because you can't just do the bad ones. You know, we have to do every single point, and at that, that amount of footings we'd have to put in, the price is just astronomical, and we'd be looking at whole replacement with an aluminum or a steel bleacher instead of the wood ones we have now. So this is a short-term Band-Aid to, to get us through, get that thing usable, if we can find a contractor to do it. This is just for the design work. We don't have a, a concrete number yet on what the repairs are going to cost, but at least we have something to bring to a contractor. Here's, here's a structural engineer's design on how to, how to get it usable again. And then if the prices don't come back favorable, then we'll have to decide at that point whether we need to go a different direction. So I just want to be upfront with that right away, that it will not solve the, the ultimate issue that we are having over there, so.
I appreciate the complete update. Hearing what he had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Fossil.
Support.
Support by councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Nick, just so the residents know, the north bleachers are the wood ones we're talking about.
Correct.
The salt are steel. The addition off the main grandstand, those are steel, so those aren't an issue. It's just the north that we're addressing.
Yes, just the north, yep, just the north wooden ones.
All right, any other discussion?
I had a quick question.
Yes, councillor Whitney.
Nick, um, what has, has it been looked at, what like a complete teardown redo would cost for the, the Raceway Grandstands?
I don't have a, a for sure answer. I have a comparable in a baseball grandstand, aluminum set, a baseball grandstand, four hundred thousand dollars for an aluminum set. That is, that one over there is quite a bit bigger than a baseball grandstand, so I would say at least a half million dollar for, for an aluminum brand-new set of bleachers out there.
That's just to replace the north.
Yes, that would be just, right, that would be just to replace the north, yep.
Did the, did it hurt their attendance not having that?
You know, um, no, they said it had, it doesn't. Pretty much every, um, every night or every weekend of the summer, it's not an issue. The only time it's an issue is during the Labor Day shootout, when they pack the house. So we have talked about, if it comes down to it, maybe it does get taken down eventually, and we bring in portable bleachers for that one event to have enough seating capacity that they're looking for, because, you know, ninety-five percent of the time during the summer, it's not, it's not an issue. But it is on a good, a good corner, you know, right at the end, and people want to get, be as close to the action as you can. That is one, I guess, disadvantage, you're, you're farther, farther away from the corner, you know, where people want to see. But, yeah, I mean, it is an option we've talked about, that, you know, maybe down the line, we rent, we rent bleachers, or we do something different if, if it becomes an issue annually. You know, so.
Thanks. Hearing what Mr. Rowan had to say, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
We move, nothing for boards and commissions, move on to licenses and permits. Approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Girls Hoop Club to hold a raffle on Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at the Hibbing High School. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, number two. Approve the raffle permit application request of the Blue Jacket Hockey Club to hold Bingo on January third, tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four at the DUU. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved. Motion approved.
Most approved by Council Swiber.
Support.
Support by Council Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number three, approve the special event permit application of the Hibbing Chamber of Commerce to hold the Spirit of Unity Parade on Monday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three on Howard Street. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Most approved by Council Whitney.
Support.
Support by Council Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Or approve the special event permit application of the Hibbing Public Library to hold the twenty twenty-three Library Yuletide Celebration on Thursday, December seventh, twenty twenty-three at the library from three P M. through seven P M. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Council Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Council Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number five, approve the raffle grant application request of Precious Paz to hold a raffle on Saturday, November fourth, twenty twenty-three at the Lincoln, Lincoln Elementary School. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Council Bayless.[1713.58]